No, no. It's the same thing. I have to say it may have changed.
A lot, you know. My generation. It's a good game. So that's right. Yes. And I'm just like, no. I just have my own.
Go ahead, Robert.
Our pledge is to rely on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present the minutes from the meeting of August the 15th, 2012. If anyone knocked at the property, it pushes the clock. And all the aldermen have reviewed their minutes. We'll entertain a motion to approve. Fair enough. traditions, corrections, all first.
I have a water department equipment purchase. It says in the pallet, I was forced to power without the two hours. Seems like it was off.
Yeah, it was. It's four.
It says from six thirty to eight.
Six.
Well, I would make that up. Somebody said.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm just saying, more like two thirty.
Yeah, I was thinking about two thirty to three eighty, seven thirty or something like that. Hundred thirty to eight.
Two thirty to eight.
My apologies. It's definitely an error.
Okay, tell me.
No page?
No.
Second page. So many of the trees under this site, I think there were about three or four.
Oh, sure.
But that isn't how it is. Many could be. Any changes? Not to our motion to approve. All right, unless we have to prove a match for our votes. This is pressing. On the vote?
Aye.
There was some discussion about the vote last month to seat Connie Jacobson not having the proper intermodal agenda appointments, RNA agenda tonight. I'd like to move that forward to this point so that we can make our votes and make them count, that way nothing we do will be challenged. With the advice and consent of the council, I wish to make two appointments at this time. I'm going to reappoint Connie Jacobson to the vacant seat in Ward Two, and we're going to reappoint Debbie Wyatt to the seat vacated by Frank Lecie. I have a couple of maybes for an eight-month term until the next council is seated in April next year. Can't really seem to find people for a two-year term, it's pretty hard, Debbie had to agree. So to that extent, I'm going to reappoint Connie to the second ward seat and Debbie to the vacant seat vacated by Frank Lecie.
Debbie, what's the same thing that you're on your hand?
Debbie is solid in her position. We can check with Bruce and we can reappoint Debbie to Frank's seat. And then I can still look for somebody to fill that eight-monthly.
I think so.
A lot easier to fill. And then we'll see if she's in her seat right now.
It was my understanding that in order to not be in violation of the meetings etiquette, we have to discuss the running on the agenda work items.
What swing did you want?
They can only see that if I have chief of police or they have a position that is where you're violating the meetings.
So are you saying that the agenda items have to be specific?
I wish you could discuss them.
They should be as specific as possible. I don't know specifically on what. Whether that would apply. In general, agenda items should be as specific as possible. For example, if down here, which doesn't cover anything. So I don't know what that means. It's not weird. You made your appointments. Council, we'd best have that. Somebody make a motion to have the agenda for the next meeting. Who moves the council? Okay, so that means that Connie doesn't vote on anything at all? No, she's old. Old, that word. Because we don't want somebody, like Debbie, you know, they're on the house. So they don't become a permanent member of the council. They're approved by the council. She's a temporary. I understand. So it's just temporary. Temporary, that's what it says. Okay. For example, even if she were voted down, you could appoint her as a temporary, and she can continue to involve the events. So we're saying we're not getting any appointments on Friday?
No. You made your end. But they have a vote, we have a vote, and do that. We'll make a motion now to make that specific on that meeting, so that we're not.
Okay, we have a second minute. I second. We have a second. Now, if you can vote on this.
Not us.
Debbie can. Because she's still sitting, she's still under seat. She's still, it's just she resigned. No, at this point. All right, so.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. While we're on the subject of that, inasmuch as these meetings are heavily televised on YouTube, I guess we all need to be on our best rawness rule of order behavior here, in that people watching the meeting will not know who's speaking, whether it's an alderman or a member of the audience, unless we properly recognize them on the floor. So to that extent, it must be understood that standing in the meeting is limited to the city council members and anyone who would be called upon from the floor to speak. So when you wish to take the floor, you'll need to address and be recognized so that we have a proper flow of communication that can be, inasmuch videotaped, and people who are watching will know who's speaking and to what issue. People from the floor will be given a chance to speak on any issue presented to the council that comes up for vote. Other than that, we will save their concerns until we get to the public concern section. And again, we'll ask them to identify themselves, and we're always limited to three minutes. Okay? That's been kind of the policy since eighty-five, I know. Okay, let's get back on the agenda then. The city clerk's cash receipt report.
We have cash receipts for the month of August, sixty-four thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion to approve. Call the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Reports from city employees. Shane?
We, Bill and I, have reported to the city council this evening here that in the last thirteen days, we've found three water leaks in our system, which have resulted in a day of use of sixty-six thousand gallons a day, what we will do is two hundred and six, that's forty thousand gallons a day. We're continuing to make improvements to the water plant. Mike's getting ready for his NFU work this week. And that's it for right now, man.
So you're saying we're losing two thousand five hundred plus gallons per hour?
Right, and Matt, we're losing forty thousand gallons a day.
Right, right. Matt, folks, yeah, and that would be twenty-five, sixty-something, right? So when we had, when we had the water, the power outage in the six hours that we were without power, we lost almost fourteen thousand gallons of water, the leaks.
Well, I'll just go on record, the state too, that we had some rain and that passed with spring, very similar. So whether we contributed all to the leaks or the percentage to the leaks is anyone's guess, but we are forty thousand gallons less a day than we were forty-five days ago.
Well, in any way, twenty-six hundred gallons an hour is a lot of water to lose. Have we set up a pretty policy now in the event of our outage?
We have a standard operating procedure in place. We have a tab basically, case by case there. Once the alarm system notifies, you myself or Mike, we come to the water plant. Our first call is down in Soco to try to estimate what is wrong and what amount of time it will take to restore power. If it is over a two-hour period, we call all toper, we have a contract for the generator. And what happens on a Saturday, though, they don't, you know, take some time, we can run through. So there is a standard operating procedure. Each case is individually. But that, we should be able to sustain water for six, seven, eight hours in a long period of time.
At what point do we notify the fire department, or is...
The fire department will notify right away if we have a power outage and then they have a standard operating procedure within other communities, you know, stand by.
Anything else?
Not unless anyone has a question for me. Thank you.
Mike, are you there? Hands down on the streets, start the car.
We were talking either Wednesday or Thursday, tentatively right now. We were gonna go this morning, but with rain and stuff, they got pushed back, so we're on a few days behind, so hopefully we'll have that wrapped up this week.
All right, committee reports. Anything on the finance committee, Rob?
No, we don't have a lot. We did get, continuing to get our regular, we actually got a nice amount from the state this time. And probably about the end of the month, we'll be looking at the rest of our taxes from the county. At that time, too, this is not clearly financial, but, you know, what TEF money will be coming in and things like that.
Do we have a number from the county yet?
I don't think we do, no. Yeah, on TEF, forty of it. So we need to make sure that the money is allocated in the calendar year, so it'd be nice to know how much we have, so that we can allocate. Previous years, we've got a number in February that was fairly accurate, so this is now September. We're still within ten thousand, it's hard to, makes it hard to work.
Anything else, Rob? Anything on the streets now? Acting, alderman, county, no. Anything on the cemetery? We don't have a, well, we have a water chair. Debbie, anything from you on water? All right. We don't have a police chair. And if that's a cemetery, we did. All right, any other committee reports? Did any committees meet? No committees met, all right. Approval is committed claims, Rob?
If I have any questions, we don't have anything, anything on the board or around the claims, I'd make a motion that we approve the committed claims, but no questions.
Any seconds? Fifty seconds? Any discussion? Call the vote?
Aye.
The link of water bills were covered. Have any, any discussion required? Do we have to have a motion to shut up at this point?
With the meeting going on, case by case, this is actually the first one where they show up.
People show up, so.
So we have people who did not show up?
Yes. There are the pad all right there, pad all right. That's great.
Twenty-five years of this, yeah. Still limited. All right, okay, thank you. Unfinished business, Bruce, let's turn to your desk.
Other than, we had done some discussion last meeting about this property out by eighteen and seventy-eight, and you asked me to take a look at the proposed deed from IDOT. And that deed would transfer the property to the city in the event that the city disposed of it. They could come back, do that, contact IDOT, and let them know, and they might require us to give them some of the, it's all of the conversation, a part of the conversation. So before we could transfer it to somebody else, we would have to follow the comp, get their position as to, as to what they wanted. That's assuming you can sign. Other than that, I didn't have any questions. That was important. On the, there was a question about a property that had been given to the city, to the city in Tulare, and it does contain a condition that, a restriction run of the land, and that it can be used exclusively for city purposes. So the property cannot be, cannot be transferred without that condition. We have to, we have to take it and use it for city purposes, whatever we're talking about. And perhaps another, a non-profitable condition, I'd take it, I suppose. You would have to use for city purposes.
Yes, of course.
The scouts might qualify.
Roseanne. All right, I think this, IDOT property is on the new business, actually it shouldn't be, old business shouldn't.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah. Should be unfinished business, because we tabled it twice.
And then the other, I don't know, wait, but ask, I don't know if it was given to anyone else or not, I did email it this morning, I think. I was asked this morning, I heard this far. Water, water bill, is as far as people that are snowbirds, leave for a few months, and we're in charge of them, because they're not here, they're not wanting their water, they're still discontinue necessarily, at least not using it for a period of time.
I think we have a proposal, not prepared, from Shane and Barb.
I prepared something, emailed it to the city.
You did today?
Yeah, and I sent that to you as well.
May I do it?
I don't know, Barb had called me, and we were trying to get this done quickly, so I'm not sure.
Shane, did you see this yet?
No, I have not, man.
Why don't you come over and have a look at this, because we can get down to that here in a minute or two. Actually, it's top of the list, we can defer it. Okay, all right, thank you. I guess when we're having an appointment, we're back to where we were before on this appointment thing, but what I do want to do is to appoint Debbie Wyatt to Frank's seat, take Frank's committee assignments. So in that regard, I'm going to make a temporary appointment of Debbie Wyatt to hold Frank Lecie's committee positions since he tends to be in that seat. That'll give us an acting police chair. We haven't had much activity in the police committee, so maybe we could get something moving here, so maybe ask for a divvies. Okay, Shane, what do you think about that?
Well, basically, I'll let Debbie, if she's taking meetings appointments as well, no we're not.
Well, she won't, so we'll give her Frank's appointments, because we need action on police matters more, we need action on...
That leaves us now a water and sewer chairman. We met three months ago, Rick, one of the discussions we had, or mayor, one of the discussions we had, was the snowbird. It seems to be that they, people in vacation don't want to pay garbage. We then spoke to PDC, they're willing to take account from us if we actually collect and bill us on that, so that alleviated the garbage aspect of the snowbird. And it comes back to be water, and no alderman has had a chance to see this yet, so I assume we will get it out to you tomorrow and probably vote on it next month, but it was our concern that water and sewer committee made what to do with the snowbirds and what to do with the garbage. Garbage has to operate. Now, it's a question of whether you want a property garbage amendment bill and bill it forty-three-ten a month if your water and sewer, or exclude the garbage, or exclude the sewer charges such as district water. And we could go that route, an option, or the other option would be to shut them off, which the ordinance currently states is twenty-five-dollar fee for us to not shut your water off and reconnect it, which is two hundred fifty dollars. So basically, needs to be read by each alderman and discussed, and so I really think we need to build a committee back, back committee with this here.
Oh, that's all right. I think the council needs to be aware of this. It is an item that amounts to some money. We've discussed this a number of times. As a, our town's snowbird, because it's pending, October, it is in my favor to have a vacation plan that we've had, where we pay nothing. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to all the people in the community who can't afford to go to the floor for the winter. As long as we were paying the garbage, that made it, that really went over the top. The problem we have, of course, is that since we put in the R O plan, we have come a long way since nine months away from their water system. The vast majority of our expenses have not a lot to do with the usage of any particular citizen. Maintaining that plan, and maintaining chain, and maintaining our system now is our biggest expense, and electricity is right in there, too. I think running about two grand of money for electricity for just that area. So we do have a lot of expenses with running the water plant that far exceed the actual usage of the water, and there's water that we're, what we're charging people is relatively low, that our water rates are quite low. Any of you who have ever asked Soco to turn off the power, they have a pretty hefty reconnect charge. If you go away and leave the power on at your house, you still pay like twenty-five or some dollars just to have the electric meter in your house. The gas meter, I think, has a similar charge if you don't use any gas at all. So our company doesn't let you off either. They probably have a smaller investment in the homeowner than the city does. We have a much larger investment in each of our customers, and that, the city is relatively small. We don't have a lot of customers to spread our costs out over. That's my feeling on that fairness is part of the issue, and maintaining our water is a healthy, financially healthy net. Shane, did we read that ordinance?
I mean, just, Rob?
Do a busy honors and do an ordinance, so people know what we're talking about there.
Okay, just the top one, or are we...
Yes. No, just the top.
Just the top.
Okay. This is an ordinance to establish charges for city services temporarily disconnected. Whereas the state council has considered in open session the charges for state services to customers who are periodically absent from the city during which such services are available and connected, but not actually used, without requiring disconnection of such services. Therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of two months, our county law as follows, section one, that the following section is hereby added to the city code and shall read and be as follows. Anyone, any user desiring for his convenience to have services temporarily disconnected shall make applications therefore to the city clerk. The application shall state the dates for temporary discontinuance of service and shall be for a period of not less than ninety days, nor more than a hundred days. For wat, for water and sewer users, the charge for temporary discontinuance of service shall be forty-three-ten per month during a period of temporary discontinuance. For water-only users, the charge for, the charge for temporarily discontinuance of service shall be twenty-six dollars per month during the period of temporary discontinuance. Charges for discontinuance of service shall be twenty-five dollars. Charges for connection or reconnection for service shall be twenty-five dollars. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect ten days after its passing and publication provided by law.
Shane, I thought there was two fifty on the reconnection.
Did I say twenty-five?
Yes.
Number five, charges for connection and reconnection with service shall be two hundred fifty.
Shane, how many did we count last year?
Could be twenty, twenty-five.
Well, I think the consensus of the council when we met, it's a new council now, was that we needed to address this and make progress, whatever, to that, he was scared, and then it came down to water. We used math on that, the disconnect and reconnect, it's equivalent to leaving it on a day or night. So being so much easier to see, I apologize for that. If there's really like, I'll be able to get it to you. But I think that's basically what we had talked about in the committee meeting. And we were supposed to come forth with this in the fall prior to winter. If you can't change it, I don't know who's second, third on this water and sewer committee.
Missed in our second and third.
Right, so.
We were committed to that.
Perhaps we could have a meeting and, and the other all of it, and vague revisions, and then we could really go back.
Well, we've been picking this around for some time, I don't know how anyone else feels about it or react really hard to it. Does anyone have a, any council members have a, a input on this before we send it back to committee?
We'll get it to you on that.
Well, garbage helps a lot. Getting that seventeen dollars off. But I just think that personally, we need to, we need to do what's best for the city as a whole and what's fair for everybody as a whole. Because there are a lot of people who can afford to go away for the winter. And so the bills that we get still have to be paid. And in that regard, we need to, we need to have some kind of a policy. Okay, anything else on water? If not, we'll move to the cemetery rules and regulations. A friend of Don Schmick's and mine from Chicago, Craig Johnson, is involved with this sort of thing. And he was contacted to send out a compilation of cemetery rules in use and, but he was aware. I don't know whether he was, Craig is active in north central Illinois. He spends a lot of time in Shakel and Princeton and Lad, he lives up in Wheaton. So Craig compiled those to us and Craig suggested that we post rules at the entrance to the cemetery and have expanded rules at the Sexton shed at the city hall. All of you got a copy of them? I suppose the proper way to do this is to either make a motion or enter into discussion. Would have any comment from the city council on the committee rules, say, Roseanne?
I've heard more on this one issue than any issue combined in a year and a half I've been on this council.
I'm a little surprised, but I see you're upset about it.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not upset, I'm just, I'm just saying in fact that people that talk to me are not real happy with a lot of the, the changes or appear to be changes that we haven't had. Now, and it's three more going, or, you know, kind of changing the rules from what they are.
But we don't have rules.
Wow.
That's, we have the rules. The guys that know about that, they do, because we have a lot of problems with hitting flower plots with mowers and ceramic shards going everywhere. We have a lot of problem with finding stakes in the ground that can't be seen.
That's a good thing, we have, that's interesting to hear, we have a lot of, because I have to go along with law a lot, have to go talk with the town.
That's fine, that's fine. It's been an item that has come along. We have had a lot of equipment damage after in recent years from hitting obstructions in the grass. To that extent, I talked to Don about it two years ago. And Don thought we should have some rules enforced so that we can control what goes on in the cemetery plots. We've had a situation where people plant trees on places that are not their own cemetery plot and have had iron devices outside the cemetery plot. So to that extent, we've looked for it. Now, it's going to cause a lot of hurt ruin and dissent, why, let's come up with something else. These are not something I came up with. I asked a gentleman who is knowledgeable on the subject to send us something as a starting point, and this is what makes sense. He's a very respected man, he's very conservative, considered, had very good judgment, he works for Morton Hardware. Jess?
I don't disagree that we need some type of guidelines. Just one of those, is we, we, I don't think that we need to have rules that you would expect in a commercial cemetery. Or do we have to, the, the system, a lot of this, we would expect on someone who only allows flat and they run a commercial lower rules center. That's what I thought my right was. Are we, you know, you'll be further, are we only allowing some of the flat headstones now? Because yeah, if that's what we have, it would make sense, just to.
All right, I think you, you hit it though on the head, and maybe we can make some rules and regulations in accordance with their plots. If they're outside of their, if they're outside of the area, but if it's within their area, maybe, not anything goes, I don't want to say that, but if they're within their area, that, that will be fine and, and, or on an individual basis, and that may be too hard to do on an individual basis because some pay very good care and, and are things, and they are within their area that we probably wouldn't be going over, so.
Well, when this came up, Craig said, I want to ask him about it. The first thing he said today, he said, what about gray blankets? Whether it was gray blankets or, or people simply put on the gray, he said, most places don't allow. And I've been a customer here, so we probably should leave that in, he did leave that in, the gray blankets. That's fine, we have been discussing this for a long, long time. We looked at some rules from the city of Hyland, and the council actually approved those rules a year ago, was that last April? Does anybody remember?
I do remember it happening, that picture, I can't tell you.
It wasn't, it was, it was actually, it was a picture, headstone.
Right.
The city of Hyland.
Yeah, is that it?
Yeah. I remember that. Okay, but that's, we were going to, we did approve those, actually. But they don't, they're not very specific, they're awfully general. Now, if you want to stick with that, that's fine. But we've been at this point for some time, you want to table it, send it to the cemetery committee, come find a way back.
I think you can leave that addressed there as a matter of fact.
Because just real quick on these rules, and then you have a lot of similar, Rick.
Right, right.
The only difference is, they don't, they don't disallow them, but they say if they're deteriorating or, or derelict and, or without the consent of the sex, I mean, so it's like you can't give consent.
Sure.
windows that if you've got stuffed animals and mice.
deteriorating.
I'm sorry?
All of our stuff does say that if it's deteriorating, it can be removed. We've recovered that.
Yes, we do have that in the in most of us. Well, let's have a motion and send this back to committee.
I would like to have someone like me.
All right, all right. We're at appointments again. I guess we got appointments on her a lot, but.
Covered all the places.
Covered all the places.
I think he was the head of the cemetery committee, so who is taking that now?
Don, please.
You know, Don, Don.
That's the cemetery. Okay. We've we've looked at this. Well, this doesn't record very well. Folks on YouTube. Clearly understand what's going on. Uh, Route seventeen seventy-eight property that we put the uh parade plants out, twenty-seven hundred parade plants were done by volunteers. Uh, and at the time, I think we've been over this several times. Jim Nolan's idea was to have a front door to Toulon. Some question, put a welcome sign. We had this offer now from the state for about sixty or ninety days. Bruce has gone over it. Uh, we tabled it twice. Uh, do we have any input or any movement by the council regarding this uh land? I do have two people who have said that they would be serving on the committee once we have a land. You can't find a committee for something that doesn't exist. We do have people who would serve up and we're looking for a third. But I believe somebody else said it's the council.
I think what's hard for those of us who have been serving on the council with it is that when those flowers were planted, the city was asking for involvement. It was very specifically asked. Is this going to have us be accountable? Or we wouldn't have to do anything with this? I also thought that would be the time for someone to share with the council that we were entertaining potentially taking that property. Um, because it feels like that was a big secret and interest fund also, but that never feels well. I don't think anyone at the council was aware that that was that was a conversation we were taking.
Uh, do you have? You were involved from the beginning, Cindy. Do you have something to add?
That was never ever an issue.
I think that for those who are on the council, we went out and were the start of a year of those discussions. When the plans went out there, we asked very specifically, are we going to? Is there anything that the city's going to have to do with that? Now, it's also my understanding after talking to her, we are not. And again, I do not have the paperwork and I have to get this one, so I still have to. But it's mine, it's potential, there's nothing that requires us to do to maintain this. Or do I think what the city's going to do is if we choose not to, correct?
There's no meeting here that would require us to do anything more than what the city's doing. We think that.
It's a little hard to piece this all together going back. I can't even remember when we started, when the subject came up. Uh, I remember that I was at the Stark County News Office, uh, doing some research and I came across an article about putting by Jim Nolan some ten years ago. And in Jim Nolan's article, he suggested we have this front door. Uh, it wasn't, I think, very long after that I run into the council. Uh, some text from the council would be a good idea to have a front door. Maybe we could put a sign up there. Everybody thought it sounded like a pretty good idea. And then some folks came forward with the offer to help obtain parade flowers and plant them out there. The council was informed that we had the offer to give parade flowers. That all the work that we've done, volunteer labor, uh, where the flowers were coming from. Many of the school kids participated in putting them in. I think everyone was kept fully up to date. Uh, when it came down to the uh putting up the sign, uh, we had thought it would be good to have a sign out there. At that point, we requested from the Department of Transportation, uh, we would write to put a sign out there. They said, no, no way. It's our land, no sign. Contacted Darren Hood's office, um, and Darren went to work for us and found out that the state might just give us the land so we could put a sign up there. I think everyone was kept informed as best as possible throughout the process. At the point we were told that Darren would look into obtaining the land, uh, no one had any questions then. So when we received this, what's the date on that, Bruce?
June eleventh.
June eleventh. I was a little bit surprised as well that the state. So here, here's your land, you're gonna have it. As for where, we 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 tabled it in June, we tabled it in July, we tabled it in August. We we've. Yes, Rob?
We've talked about, you know, we've talked about a sign out there. But also that, you know, that we wouldn't have to maintain. I mean, I wouldn't, and I know that it may get better, but I would want to put a sign up there right now, looking like it it does. And therefore then we are going to have to do some maintaining. And I don't know if there's a little bit of insurance involved with anything out there at all on a cost. But I'm just thinking, you know, e- extra costs. My work down in the road is, we mostly only mow it once or twice or mow it around or maybe with me, there are guys out there, we gotta get the equipment out there. And I know it's only three miles, but it's. We're just, we're gonna have to do it. And it just, it's been some expense and we might get a committee going. Uh, if we don't get a committee going for after a year and then it just, then goes to state. I don't, I don't know. I guess what bothers me is if it is our land and if we want it looking nice, there's gonna be some, some. The work is not so bad, but it could be costly to the city.
Connie, did you?
Yeah, if like if we did get the land, Darren could have another committee, like the people that volunteered to put the plants in, can they maintain it?
Certainly.
I mean, if they were willing to, they take the responsibility for it and not leave it to the city. I think the city's got enough to do.
And that's the hardest thing, Connie. I think if there's good intentions, I think the vision that people have to be really neat out there. The problem is it's easy for people to type it from their own help. Like you knows what I do. We're marketing money.
That's, that's mine too, because right now, given the lot to the cemetery, because we're having a lot enough time to keep in that lot. And it's like if we got more love and we discussed that the last week, all the little sections all over town that they have to take there. So.
Can we?
So you don't mow for it?
Well, I know, but it's gotta be.
Maybe if you're putting it in, then you don't have to.
But what do you do in the meantime when it looks like it does out there right now?
I mean, you really don't.
And it's developing.
And you're gonna just let it sit. And if people don't like the idea of having this sign out there.
I'm gonna help them, all right? I think most anybody that knows what the flowers are, understand that's what it is.
Just leave it like that?
You go out one day and then you cut down sucker trees or pull out any knoths or wreaths, but otherwise you don't get. The summer I was out there cutting up some weeds that had taken over. And there was nobody else out there for the remainder of the year. And that's the problem.
There was a spot.
Let's try to, let's try to keep this over and out here because no one knows who's taking. Uh, Cindy, do you, would you like to address the council on this subject?
Yeah, um, I was out there this summer with a college girl and she and I was cutting out clover that had taken over so that way you could see the flowers and there wouldn't be people saying, where are the flowers? Did they grow? Are they there? Where are they? And we made sure that you could at least see them when you turn a corner and made them so you could see them. At least we can turn a curve. And you can see yellow flowers out there now in the center. But it's, it's blotchy, but you don't see. If it all through, it'll take its time.
Cindy, how many years do you think it would take to have the parade flowers, parade plants, that is, overtake the, the land in general? And I'd say one hundred percent, but before the parade plants themselves would be self-sustaining where they had a, a nice appearance. And it would, it would look good from the road. How many years would that be? Two, three, five?
Three, five, but it recedes itself.
But was I understanding, uh, some of you may recall, and I don't remember who that was. It was the eighties, when Jock English from Lethyopon Nursery, uh, was big in parade plants. And was able to talk IDOT into sowing praise plant seeds along the right away in a number of areas. They have done extremely well. The parade plant areas that I'm familiar with, I think are burned off once every three years. Is that correct? Three to five years. Other than that, there's been no maintenance at all on this, on these, in this area. So I understand the council's concern. We, we have ourselves now a large park over here that we were given. It, it's a worthless piece of land and it costs us probably eight hundred, nine hundred dollars a year maintaining and mowing. Certainly I'm sensitive to that. Also sensitive to the fact that we're probably within four hundred, eight hundred man hours out there putting in these parade plants. Everything was donated and there were plenty of people interested in going to make it look that nice. So I guess, uh, you know, from the devil's advocate point of view, there might be something that needs to be done out there for a year or two, but within three to five years should be self-sustaining. Whether or not you want to sign out there, I guess it's the council's business. We have the offer, uh, offer is still good. I guess all they need to decide is either Sheriff will take it or I can tell things. Uh, Cindy?
The sign is, uh, free, is offering for the sign.
We have an anonymous donor.
Right.
Donate money for the sign.
And the land is also being, so basically the signs are going to cost everything we put in either for the council.
Just something says, welcome to two line, narrow this way.
Right. So this part is cost for the council that was maybe mentioned, there won't be.
There hasn't been, I don't see any cost, but.
Because there's a, there's a sign up there now, something, and you can see it, that says fire for the fire station. It's kind of angled, so if anybody's gonna say they won't see it, there's one at an angle. Should celebrate the county's old house for the fire station.
But right now, it's a leak. We can't put signs up on IDOT property and that's IDOT property. So where we put the sign there is actually breaking the law. I'm not gonna turn it, uh, I don't know what else turns it in, but we can't do that. We're not allowed to put signs up on the right way or even land that I don't. That's where we ran into, that's the wall we ran into. They said, no way, no signs. If we had the land, the firemen could put the sign on, suburbs could have a sign, uh, well, festival could have a sign. But they would have to approach the city for permission. Rob?
If, if we obtain the land.
Yes.
And take it and, and two years, five years, seven years, this gets into great extent, can we give the land back?
They're willing to pay that?
Only if they're willing, if they say, no, it's, it's your land.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, they're not required to take it back.
Did I understand from what you read that you took the sale?
If you do, you'd have to get permission from IDOT. It's possible, you could, but if you did, uh, first of all, you have to get their consent. And second, um, they may require a portion of from writing that, trying to language your, um, money. So is that the city of two line further understands no part of the transfer of property can be vacated or exposed of about the approval of the department, which we require compensation for not public use? So it. If you gave it for public use, it wouldn't, it's left approved, it would require compensation. But if you're trying to sell it to someone, they could, if they're, if they're all, they have to prove it inside. They could require the part of the sale proceeds.
Well, I guess prior to a motion. Yes, Rob? Would anyone else like to address the issue? Now entertain a motion, up, down, or sideways. Motion to accept the offer to IDOT. And a second. The eyes for lack of a second. Do we have any other motions?
I don't know, it's just that I just, I.
Have to have a motion.
We cannot go on with things that are on each other's backs, it's not specific, so.
It's been tabled three times. It is specific.
On each other.
It is.
I don't wanna table either, so wait.
It's either up or down. It's up or down. We, we don't, we have a motion to accept it, it dies for a second. So then we need a motion to table, so I have them, thanks. Yeah, send it back. So we gotta do something here, we just can't table this, it's fourth month.
Oh, have they, have they, has everybody on the council received a piece of, the paperwork? And is it, did they take it on and look at it?
Cindy, that's kind of an interruption. We, we gotta avoid this. This has been, we've had this since June. Everyone's known about this since June. The paperwork has been available, everyone since June. We brought it to the live meeting again in August, and so this is September. So the paperwork has been circulated, everyone's had a chance to look at it.
I made a motion that way, they don't like us.
We have a second. Hello, Bruce, what are we doing?
I would say move on.
Oh, is it? Move on? Moving right along. Does that mean it's stated or what? It's just, yeah. So we just send it back? So we tell them no thanks. Okay, we have a, I didn't press sense of police. I guess we're talking about the big general lecture. Now that we have a police chair, I really would like to see a police committee meeting. Uh, if there are anything to be addressed, that's the proper place to join. For the benefit of those who are new, uh, little background. Three years ago, fiscal year of one nine, our budget showed that we spent about sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars on police. Mayor Hamm had been given approval by the council to enter into some discussions with the sheriff at that time and do something with the, uh, the county. After some light, the sheriff sent me a proposal, uh, which basically was the budget from our audit. The page basically reprinted was a ten thousand dollar administration fee. So he offered to give us forty dollars a week, fifty, two weeks a year for seventy-six thousand dollars. The problem is we can't afford sixty-six, so the sheriff couldn't afford seventy-six either. He also had a proposal to give us one hour per day for a thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand dollars a year for one hour per day. For a thousand dollars an hour. That didn't make much sense either. The council agreed to go part-time. Since that time, we have reduced our expenditure considerably. I think that we need to keep in mind that the typical American worker gets thirteen days off a year. The typical worker for the city of Toulon gets thirty-eight paid holidays a year. In the case of our police department, that meant that not only was our police been getting paid for the year, thirty-eight paid days, there were thirty-eight days we had to hire somebody for the land. The cost is just heating us up. The other cost that heats us up is IMRF, some of the insurance fees. So we let them go part-time. The goal was at that point, to have three police officers sharing between approximately forty-six hours per week. We hoped that we could mainly get up to fifty, but forty-six was considered reasonable. The reason that we wanted to have three police officers, and this was agreed in the council, was that everyone needs a vacation, everyone needs to take a vacation, everyone gets sick. And when you have two police officers and one gets sick, now you have to schedule open. With three, we could maintain a publicized schedule. We felt that with three officers, we could spread out duty times with everybody got at least twenty hours a week. Our deal was to have local policemen who were employed elsewhere as sheriffs or the policemen working for the city. Because then their training expense would be absorbed at a full-time job and we would have people who are up to date with all the latest police involvement. Their, their training, their marksmanship training and all that basically gets rolled into, uh, their full-time position with a part-time job here and it's just extra money. That's kind of where we left it. Uh, all of you received from Jimmy Dyson a letter. I don't have my copy, so I'm gonna have a copy, give me the date on that.
August sixteenth.
After our last council meeting, I had made the newspaper that Jimmy was laying off people and that he was responding only to emergency calls, uh, which he always has. And Jimmy was, uh, in need of input and backup from the city. Not having a police chair, I responded to Jimmy saying, Jimmy will send you our schedule. And so what we have done, we do have a new policeman that was discussed in the July meeting. Mark Olszewski, we do have a schedule. Uh, the schedule is here, uh, I have it. It is not public information. The schedule is only to be seen by Barb, myself, the police chair, and the police. Okay, let's turn it on. Uh, the reason being is that we do not publish schedules. This is available as a, FRO, Freedom of Information Act document per regulations of Freedom of Information Act, which means exposed faculty, you can get it after it's done. So the September schedule is available in October in retrospect. We don't want to be advertising people. Apparently, the cemetery rules pretty well made it around town really fast. I imagine the police schedule will make it even faster. I do have a police schedule. There it is. Okay, you agree fast. Actually, that's August, it is August. And by this schedule, we currently have two police officers and by my count, in three weeks' time, Terry Ingles is working eleven days and Mark Olszewski was working seven. Twenty-one days in three week, in two. That's not right. Doesn't add up, three weeks is up. Anyway, Mark, Terry was working the, the lion's share of the time that Mark was working. Fewer hours. One of the things that had to brought up to the council, uh, years ago, was that the school had requested that we, uh, have some police presence in the vicinity of campus during school hours, specifically in the morning or the evening, not on a daily basis, not even on a weekly basis. But often enough that the kids would think that we do have policemen on duty and watch it. Drop it up and down both Franklin Street, Prairie Street. So, uh, we have inserted in our schedule, uh, two days in September, that we had police on duty at the school. That's only a big change. Now, I'm anxious to get a police committee meeting going. I'm anxious to have a police chairman who is, who is active. For those of you who haven't studied the police manual, recommend you do so. Police manual specifies a number of things. It specifies that a policeman first is responsible to the police chief, who then, uh, his chain of command goes to the police chair, then the council and the mayor. The mayor is ultimately responsible for all the city employees, as stated in the State Bill of Independence of Land law. The mayor is responsible for day-to-day operation and oversight of all the city employees. Policy, of course, comes from committees and from the council. The council sets the policies, the council sets the parameters, the mayor's duty to execute on a daily basis. Further, uh, no member of the police force or the police chair is to discuss police or city business, anyone outside the city. Uh, the only one who may make official pronouncements is the mayor or the police chief when approved by the mayor or the hand, but it's the police chair. I would like to have the police committees set a date for their next meeting. If we have concerns, they certainly need to be brought up. Of course, a committee meeting is a committee meeting and anyone's free to attend, just like the council. But again, only the committee has an standing. It is my wish that the committee will meet and, or achieve, achieve consensus on any items that are concerned about and bring that consensus as a report, if determined, to the city council. Okay, any questions on any of that? Now, from the point of view of Debbie as acting with the chair, if we are able and would like her to set a date or at least set a promise to set a date very soon for the next police committee meeting. Soon would be better than later. Any difficulty with any of that? Debbie, would you like to set a date or get back to us on that?
I'll have to get back to you.
Get back to us on that. Any other input on that, sir?
I have a question.
Yes?
The chief been in the hours of the meeting?
The chief has not put in hours. The chief has been advising by telephone. He wishes to, uh, disentangle himself, he has family health problems. Uh, he doesn't mind giving advice. He's been very, very good and generous with his time, giving me advice, and he was good to Frank. But since Frank is no longer with the council, now there's, you know, it's been hard. A, a police chair or a police chief has to be fully involved with state regs and have a pretty in-depth experience. It's my feeling that whomever fills that position should be somebody who's had a minimum of three to five years full-time experience as a policeman. Things change fast in the state of Illinois. There's lots of stuff, there's a lot of changes. For us to stay abreast of that, we need somebody who's able to report back to us what's new and better. I mean, even, even Doug thought that we could use a policy which some of the home rule communities had instituted where you give a home rule ticket. Uh, more research without, that would work either. Because he had done it and been involved, he was aware of it, but. We need someone who knows these things, who, who actually is involved, uh, with a larger department or county sheriff. Those people are pulling for, they're professionals, they do it every day. We do it once a month for a few minutes. Rob, did you have something?
No, I just, I, I'm hoping that in the committee and we can get all that discussed. I just, the only thing I wanted to bring up when we were talking, just as a point to clarify, when we talked thirteen days, when we talked most in thirty-eight, I think the thirteen, though you were thinking holidays and not bringing up their, whoever you were discussing, bringing up their, uh, vacation time.
It is. I read a statistic yesterday morning, Rob. Uh, the National Bureau of Labor said the average American worker has thirteen paid holidays per year.
Right, paid holiday? But then you said thirty-eight for Toulon.
Paid.
But that's counting vacation.
Yes.
And that's all I'm getting at, you said thirteen versus thirty-eight. That's paid holiday.
Paid vacation days, holidays and vacation. Yes, the typical American worker, average American worker, according to Department of Labor, has thirteen paid, that's your two weeks of vacation, if you will. But remember, a lot of people, the company I worked for before, oh, the company I retired from, you only got one week of vacation, let's hear it. A lot of people in the company where they're three years and still didn't get a second week. I got four weeks when I was there eighteen years. Well, that was nice. But most of our citizens in Toulon, I, I, you know, we could send out a questionnaire, but I'll bet. I'll bet very few citizens in Toulon get a lot of paid days off. Paid days, they don't work. How many, how many did you get?
Forty. She don't know this. She can tell you that she wants.
We don't need to go over the point.
All right.
I think it's a little harder.
Well, you know, we always wanted, we think everybody should get a Caterpillar contract. I do too, except that Caterpillar used to have in northern Illinois, what, forty thousand jobs, and we're down to something like eleven. You know, there's twenty-nine thousand people who probably wouldn't have been willing to take a week less vacation if they could get a job, or two less. Agenda procedures is the next item, I'm not sure how that got on here. Again, I don't know how long we've been on the council misty, but I know Don was here, we've been over this quite a few times. The Illinois Municipal handbook says that we have what's called a consent agenda. That means we all consent to this agenda, we agree to it. Now, many larger cities have meetings to set the agenda. And at those meetings, the rules are fairly lax about what you put on the agendas. You would say specifically, I want to pay Mike Richardson a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, you put that on the agenda. Now, you come to the meeting.
Could you put that on the agenda?
You come to the meeting, but if someone challenges that, says I'd like to remove that, and if there's no objection, it's taken off. So, there are many ways to do it, the way the city has done it, and I have said this repeatedly, you have something you want to talk about tomorrow morning, let's get together. You bring it to my attention, we'll talk about, and it's been covered in the past many times. Many things are in our resolutions and ordinances that people are concerned about, the past fifteen years ago, it's just in the box, nobody knows about it. Or it is something new. And then we fine-tune that thing, and if it's a committee, Ida, we can call a committee member, how do you feel about this? We get it on the agenda. But what we have had happen for three years, if Barb gets a phone call Thursday afternoon, put this on the agenda. Well, that's not the way it works, really. You don't call Barb when she's already printed the agenda. And I have promised the news media that we'd try to get the agendas out on Wednesday.
So how, how is that agenda?
Well, Don, if there's something you want to talk about, the committee, the cemetery committee, you say, hey, I want to put these rules on the agenda, I have specific rules I'd like to present. You call me up and say, let's put committee rules for the cemetery on the agenda, I want to have rules proposed.
To my consent, you mean that?
We agree that. And you can say, well, I talked to Misty and she agrees, and that's fine, it's, we agree, we see eye to eye, that it's what it is that you want to have on the agenda. I can say, well, Don, we passed those rules back in, from City Island, eight months ago, do you have those? You say, oh, no, I didn't have those. Well, at that point, you can go look at those, and maybe now you'll need to talk about it, or you'd like to bring them up and change that. But as we've sound found tonight, we need to be specific. When we put something on the agenda, what exactly that we want to talk about?
Respond to that?
You may.
Okay, because I am very sure that I can quote from a YouTube video in which you said, if anybody on the council has something that they would like on the agenda, all you have to do is call Barb and let her know. I did not call Barb and say, oh, just ran with the police agenda on there. We presented a very specific list of the items, one of the five police items we wanted, that could potentially be voted on tonight, as well as three agenda items. We were not debating, we were very specific. Three of the four active council members, Connie was not involved, because as far as we were aware, she wasn't truly a council member yet, because we put her on the agenda earlier than last time. We were so...
Excuse me, that's not the case. I gotta stop, you did not put her on the council.
Well, against the Open Meetings Act, because we didn't give the understanding, but we were gonna do that.
You put her on the council.
Against the Open Meetings Act.
She, no, she was placed on the council, she was a paid permanent member.
We, no, no, but that was, that was the...
Wasn't eligible.
It wasn't, we had fully appointed her, we as well voted. Which we should have not, we should have a vote on her, because we're on the agenda.
She was placed on the council, wasn't it?
Well, I think we're just giving, the bill is different, but...
I think that I would like to ask the city council, how many of you have taken the paths and certified yourselves for Freedom of Information Act? How many of you have the Open Meetings Act? Are those certificates unfiled in Barb's office? They need to be. New members have ninety days, old members have to be out of this year. So, when we speak from these things, we have to make sure we know what we're talking about. It's the intent here that we move smoothly and judiciously forward with the business of the city, not in a hazard bank way, and not in a swift shot way. To that extent, there's nothing else to report to council?
Just, just on this thing, no, and because I agree, Bruce knows what we're doing. What I'm wondering is, and how do we defend, because we read it in the paper that we broke in the open, and that's all I wonder is, if we did, how do we defend?
The tougher issue is whether or not she was appointed, she was appointed, I understand. And when she's appointed, and she's taken the oath, and she's qualified, there's, she's on the council at that point. Whether or not your vote should not have been taken that night, because it was not on the agenda. But that is illegal.
It was improper, that's why she's been on.
Unfortunately, we, but that didn't affect her being on the council.
Right.
But we weren't sure of that, and so that's why something we did is, I didn't even include Connie, because I wasn't sure to go and drag her any further than what she already was, it was me, but...
All right, just slow down, just slow down. We, we have to keep this as a meeting. All right, now, it's just, we addressed the chair, Bruce, if there's a question for the city attorney, you ask the city attorney. We have to do this, because now that we're on YouTube, people watching us here on YouTube have a much better idea of what goes on than the people read in the paper. Just because it's in the paper doesn't mean that's what happened at the city council meeting, and I sometimes wondered myself. But when you look at it on YouTube, they can see all of our faces, and see how we have to make it along here, and how we achieved consensus. So, that's the goal here. If there's an issue, and this, I think, Don, you're here long enough, I think this came up in May, the first month that I was mayor, that any issue that needs to be brought before the council, give me a call, I'll help, I'll vote for Barb, we'll research it, we'll get back to you. If it's already been covered, it's been covered. If it needs to be covered, we're covering. This is, nothing's being kept off the agenda. Now, maybe in years past, what, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Dewitt, and Mayor Hildon, I don't know. We don't know. But I said in May, three years ago, this is what we're going to do. If you want to talk about it, and you feel it's important, let's talk about it, let's research it, let's get it on the agenda, let's get some input from one or two other members, so that when we come to council, we've got something to talk about. And we're all on the same page. Easy.
Debbie, I don't, so if we want to put something on the agenda, or somebody wants to leave, who are we supposed to talk to, Barb?
Well, let's suppose, no, you don't need to talk to Barb.
She's got a little paper, though, that he's got all signed, are we supposed, is that the approach we're supposed to take, or are we...
If there's an item, you say, I'd like to talk about water hangers, okay, or a pan grill on Main Street.
Yeah, but how specific do we have to be?
Fairly specific, to the extent that, what isn't, what is the problem?
You can't put waste out, and then we don't have to...
Well, you don't talk about anything but... But again, if it's a pot pool on Miller Street, you call me up, say I got a problem with a pot pool on Miller Street, similar statement you can call my, might be a pot pool on Miller Street, I call you back, it's fixed. Or you don't understand, you think we need a policy about, I don't know, double parking on Main Street. Do we have a policy? At that point, Mike, we would go to the records and say, well, Main Street is governed by DOT, how about Miller Street? Maybe we do have coordinates somewhere that says you can't put a park on Miller Street.
No, I, I don't, I'm talking about the agenda.
Yes.
We see like parents, we're trying, we had a meeting, then the next day, we're in the paper because we screwed it up, and it's, you know, and everybody's getting kind of tired of that. And so that's where I think we cheated, that did it right. The people were wrong, and they were wrong, and it's true, that's the right.
What I was gonna say about the agenda is that that's a matter for the council, that you determine how matters are put on the agenda. They have a way to set their own decision. So, if the council was determined that they wanted that to be settled, they could make a motion to that effect, and then they can go.
We could go here, and we can go here, and agendas are discussed quite a lot. So rather than reinvent the wheel, I would suggest that it's an issue for you, then research it, and we could actually put that on the agenda as an agenda. We have a point on the agenda for a date.
I move, if we want something on agenda, we call Barb and have her put it on the agenda. We love it.
Seems simple to me.
I don't think that's a very good idea. In that case, you could have all kinds of things. I think there needs to be judicious and thoughtful in the process.
Well, we get citizens asking us something, and I think...
So who determines that that will make the agenda? If the council, if we're here, supposedly, we have the people on our board, but we're obviously educated enough to make the decision that that needs to make it to the agenda.
Well, I like to say, Mr. Harlan's table for years, the agenda was set, nobody had much to say about it. And I didn't like it. I didn't like it when the previous mayor set the agenda, and they would set it with the inference of one or two members, and no one else knowing about it, that's not right. I think the agenda's an old book. If Don says, I'd like to put this on the agenda, then Don should, if it has to do with cemeteries, Don should communicate that to another cemetery member, cemetery committee member, myself, I can call a cemetery committee member. Communication of that sort is not prohibited. We will research it, maybe it's already on the books, so often these things are. Maybe it's something we've dealt with before. But if it is important, then let's hone it and refine it, so we get to that point where we've got a specific item, and everyone then can be aware of it. If Debbie comes on and says, what's on the agenda next month, and she says, what's this about fire hangers? Somebody needs to tell the council, well, Don is putting it on. I got to do, say, well, I talked about that with Don, what he's concerned about is fire hangers, too close to the curb, and so forth, and so on, you see? So, every council member must be able to look at the agenda and ask questions, so that they can prepare themselves for the meeting. Rob?
So, Chief Garrett, a little bit before we get away tonight, our TIF, we determined last month that we wanted to have a TIF meeting before...
Yes.
The October meeting.
Yes.
Early October meeting, I believe, you know, so the first, second, third is like Monday, Tuesday, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I believe that we're...
I made Barb a promise that she would not let me fail to set a TIF committee meeting date before we wrap up tonight. I had certainly hoped, and I think we mentioned this last month, that we opened up exactly how much money we had when we had our committee meeting, so we could appropriate the money. Anyway, the first of October is a Monday, that means the eighth of October is our regular meeting day. We could either change the regular council meeting date, we could hold a TIF committee meeting the same day, same day of the meeting, or a week before, or Saturday, it's up to you guys. I'm open to suggestions around when we set the TIF committee meeting date. If that's where we are on tonight's agenda, I'd like to go there. Is that okay? Have we set a date, are we, are we ready to talk about it? And do we know when the Katrina Roberts, we wish, is going to get us our, our figure on TIF Monday?
I think we'd be safe on the...
Oh, yeah. We'll probably get it by the end of the second day.
Rob is finance committee chair.
I will get, I will get the figures, Rob, I'll get the figures that they have, and hopefully that would, that would be...
Do we want to do it the same night as our regular council meeting? Jason, can you?
If you do do that, you have to publish notice of a change in your regular schedule meeting, unless you hold it before six o'clock.
Yes. No, we would have to do that, that's correct.
I don't know how everybody feels, I'd like to maybe do it, or not do it all, I want to know.
Do we want to wrap up the TIF, all of our TIF, after TIF committee meeting, or send the TIF committee recommendation to the council the following meeting? How is that best done, I suppose? We have approved things in the city council, we can approve TIF expenditures as the city council. I think it takes a TIF committee meeting, most of the presentable expenditures.
And hear from the public?
Yes.
I defer on that, so... I've not been through this as far as that, can we, can we decide that hour, can we just set, that's over, do we need a meeting ahead, so we can send it to the council?
Right, right.
I think that's how we should proceed.
One of you who think we should do this, anyone have an idea, when would be the best time? Can anyone tell me one of you think more, a greatest number of people would be able to attend? Because I think TIF is kind of a big deal, it's an awful lot of money. And we have to really be careful of what we do with that money that is in the best interest of the community. It takes more than just us, I think. So, when would be the time when we could be there, and the most number of taxpayers could be there?
Indeed, I would think so.
My schedule's open. Except for Sunday morning, I'm pretty well free.
Tuesday, no games?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tuesday, the second? Fine with me.
There's volleyball on Tuesday night.
Oh, I'm just... We're ready for TV, Jason?
That is a fire department, that's Tuesday night as well, we're not at this room, so...
Monday, the first? Good ball game?
It will be an away game. Guess whom comes in the twenty-eighth?
Okay, all right, all right. Sure, you can do it. Go to the JV, you know, like, I mean, my baby. Good for everybody? All right, TIF meeting is set for what time? Would you have it early, like, a bit later, or maybe a little later, get more people to come, what do you think? People like to eat dinner at six o'clock?
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Ida, me?
Are you wanting a beer?
Hard?
Are you wanting a beer? Because I gotta check the season, I think it's open.
Well, we'll have to check availability.
If it's closed, you can have it at City Hall, but...
About park shoulder. I will shoot for the first...
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, TIF meeting. We would, I don't know if I get people who are interested or involved. Gee whiz, I don't know what we can tell them. We should, we should throw something in there that gets everybody warmed up, they should go to the TIF meeting. No suggestions, all right? Anything else to put forward, council? Any public concerns this evening? Chris Preser?
I thought there was a motion made about the agenda by Mr. Turm, and nobody paying attention to this, so either somebody's got to second it, or just turn it down.
Can I go back to that? Who else?
Just cross it up.
I believe that was withdrawn, but if it was not, what do we have to do according to Robert's hearing?
Please?
Please, have we read the book? Well, I mean, is there a second? No. I died for the lack of a second. There was no second. Died for the lack of a second. Anything else? Entertaining motions of adjournment? It's your chair, guys.
I'll be there.
Second? Vote? Listen, vote quick. All right.